I'm gonna go ahead and comment that this meeting can be seen on grandberry.org. Where have they moved my papers around?
She hoped you wouldn't notice.
I get a lot of help. Okay, it's www.granberry.org/live. And the meeting is also, will be online there in the YouTube arena after the meeting. Mr. Kaufman, was it something I said? Oh, okay. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting. It is 6:00 PM, Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas. And this is the regular city council meeting for the city of Granberry. We are now called to order. I'm going to introduce Father Tim Taylor, who is at the Good Shepherd Anglican Church. This is his first time to be with us tonight. And if you all recall, Father Smith was with us many, many times. And I do give him credit for just insisting that I learned something about Robert's Rules before I continued in this role. A good mentor. We miss him. And Father Taylor, you'd be certainly welcome back just as much as he is. And we frequently brought him into an unplanned invocation when someone was not available. So if you would, we'll stand, and if you would lead the invocation, we'll get going. Then we'll do the pledge to the flag.
Thank you. Let us pray. "O Lord, our governor, whose glory fills all the world, we commend this city to your merciful care, that we may be guided by your providence and dwell secure in your peace. Grant to the mayor and city council, and to all in authority wisdom and strength to know and do your will. Fill them with the love of truth and righteousness, and make them continually mindful of their calling to serve this people in reverence, obedience to you through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God, world without end." Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible."
We do have some people that have signed up to speak tonight, and we will get to that under the public comments. And also, we have an open session later tonight. But if you are here to speak on a public notice where we open up the floor, the process is that we will open to staff to do the explanation, may ask a few questions from the dais here, and then we'll certainly open it up to public comments. So prefer that you sign up, so that we do have a phone number, email, so that we can get in touch with you if needed. But rest assured, we are gonna call for the public comments and let you speak on these items tonight. Okay? So, with that said, Mr. Kaufman, I'm gonna go right to proclamation and presentation. City Council, City Manager issue encouraging statements to recognize city staff.
Thanks. I would like to take a moment tonight to recognize our incredible frontline staff. They're the folks that deal with you at the window, citizens at the window, answer the phones. They work directly with those to serve and to meet the needs of customer service. And so, you know, I've never had a complaint from a citizen or anyone that one of our team members, you know, couldn't run the computer properly, or couldn't run a calculator, or didn't do it fast enough. It's all, if you ever get a complaint, and I hadn't had one here in my entire 10 years, where someone complained about an employee, but I've had it in other cities where they complained about the customer service rep being rude, or inconsiderate, or not listening. Ours go beyond the call of duty to do that, and I want to just give them a shout out tonight. These are all the people that are in the utility billing, the community development, the permits, the service center team, the police department administrative team, the municipal court, the internal services team, the airport staff, the tourism team, and the city secretary's office. Those are where all the phone calls go. Those are where all the interaction, where the people show up and knock on the door, or tap on the window, and say, "I need to pay this," or "I need information on this." And our group does a great job with that. They're problem solvers. They're looking for ways to meet your needs. And so, thanks to all of you who work and make a positive difference in our community, in our residents, in our own lives here at the city. We see you, we appreciate you, and we're proud to have you as key members of the city of Granberry team. I also want to recognize some folks that got some recent certifications and licenses. Brian Walker got his D. Water license. Landon Maxwell got his D. Wastewater Treatment Operator license. Forrest Lohman, Intermediate Police Officer Certificate. Jeremy Rebstock, Advanced Peace Officer Certificate. And Crystal Cox, Pool and Spa Operator Certification. So let's give everybody a round of applause for that. Way to go, guys, gals. I'm gonna stop there, Mayor. Let y'all.
Since you could keep going very long with that, council? Comments? Anyone? Well, I have to echo what Mr. Kaufman said here. This is an outstanding staff, and I say that from my prior history before becoming mayor was as a, well, I ran all the customer service for United Health Group. And these folks, these folks here, we would take them any day of the week. So watch out, don't let anybody leave. We appreciate it. Let's go on to public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. Like I mentioned, when we get to the public hearing, we will ask that you speak on that agenda item. But right now, I do have Mr. Danny Dwight, who wants to speak on item number 7.7. Mr. Dwight, good to see you here. If you would, just come up, give us your name. And go ahead, yeah, we'll go ahead and do it now. Give us your name, and turn on that mic, so that we can record it. Got it? Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Danny Dwight. I live at 405 Count's Alley. If you go down Bridge Street to Stockton and take a left, you go one block on Stockton, and you come to Count's Alley, and I live at the third house down on the left. That street on Stockton right there is what this is about, the extension of the no parking zone onto that block of Stockton. The reason for that, I think it's a really good idea, is there is an island in the middle of that street right there, which effectively divides it into two small lanes. Whenever there's an event on the square, and there are many, people park over there, and they park up and down that street, and it's not uncommon for us to leave our homes to walk up to the square or to drive away. And you physically cannot get a car out of that area, out of that neighborhood sometimes. There's about 25 or 30 homes back there, and that's effectively the only way to get in and out of the neighborhood. Blanche Drive is a very small street, but this is where most of the traffic comes into our neighborhood. And when cars park there, I've paced it off before, the distance between the cars that are parked and the island in the middle of the street is significantly less than what a car needs to get through, much less an emergency vehicle such as an ambulance or a fire truck. I think this is an excellent idea for that one block only. The people tend to park up and down Count's Alley and further down Stockton, and we don't have any problem with that, because it does not block the entrance and exit from our neighborhood. So I and most of my neighbors are hardly behind this. If you could make that a no parking zone, it'd make us safer in the area, prevent accidents, and in case we need an emergency vehicle, that they'd be able to get in there when they're needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming up and presenting that for us.
Could I say something?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
Mr. Dwight, I'd like to thank you for bringing it to our attention, what was going on in that area, and that's why we're reacting to your obvious needs. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, okay. We'll move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed. Items will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under deliberation agenda. Gentlemen, is there any item that you'd like to remove, deliberate? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Oberdear makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Corgan? Okay. All right. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, but that will pass 6-0. Thank you, gentlemen. So we're gonna go to the deliberation agenda, and I believe you said this best, this is the Wowie program. Thank you for allowing us to come with you tonight, Kara. Okay. The first one that we have is a public hearing on Consider Adopting Ordinance Number 25-28, approving the request of Bill and Alice Hilton to designate the Keith Brock Home as a local historic landmark, and the property is located 523 Peach Street. Mr. Kaufman?
I'm gonna delegate items 7.1 through 7.5 to Ms. Wowie, since all of these are from her department, and she's got the presentation ready for you. So thank you, Ms. Wowie.
Thank you, sir. I said we'll start on this context slide. The slide in front of you shows the site, the subject site outlined in teal or blue. It's right there on the southeast corner of the block. The applicant is requesting to designate this Keith Brock Home as a local landmark, and the criteria for landmarks contained in the historic compatibility overlay and the zoning district, the historic design guidelines. Based on the criteria and review conducted, the residence is worthy of designation. Now we'll move on to show you the house. These are a series of slides of, pictures of the house. And as we go through, I'll move from slide to slide to show the building proposed for the landmark designation. The criteria are specifically how the property relates. The first one is significance in history, architectural, archaeology, and culture. This house was built in 1908, and it is a architectural style or period of box and strip, and that's from the original construction. There were updates in the 1930s, which were of the minimal, traditional type of architectural style. And some of the architectural features that you can see on this photograph are the rock cladding/masonry. It's called peanut brittle, and you can kind of see how that peanut brittle is fashioned by stones. It's a limestone pattern, and this type of residential construction is not being built anymore. The rock lane is a trade skill, and it's just not common today. This elevation also shows 16-pane Georgian casement windows. So when you count up all those divided areas in the windows, there are 16 per each window. And this is the other side of the house from the street, so similar characteristics. This slide shows flooring. The house has solid tongue-and-groove maple floors. And to the left there is the chimney. It's kind of cute, there's a heart-shaped stone that was placed into the masonry. This slide shows the walls inside, and bottle caps that were found when they were doing some work on the property. The interior has three-step interior frames, floors, doors, and windows, and solid six-panel So the project is associated, this is number three on this slide, associated with lives of persons significant to our past in Granberry. And the chain of ownership has been provided since 1907. It's very well-tenured. Specifically, Earl Keith was a businessman, entrepreneur, and Chamber of Commerce president from the 1940s. He also served in the school board president, owner of local movie theater, The Princess The Palace, and he built the Brazos Drive-In in 1952. Dr. Roy Lee Brock was an osteopathic physician and surgeon. He was instrumental in development of medical care in Hood County, and part of establishing the first nursing home in Hood-Summerville counties. It's the Valley View Nursing Home at 600 Reunion Court. He was also a school board member. So those are just two of the people involved with that property. The property embodies distinctive characteristics of a tight period or a method of construction. As mentioned earlier, there were updates in the 1930s that were consistent with the minimal, traditional-style house of the period, and the gable roofs, minimal eaves, small porch, and asymmetrical design with the front doors set off the center, and use of local limestone are all features associated with minimal, traditional style. And as mentioned also, the 1908 original construction was box-and-strip construction. It's evident through the wooden piers with floor platform supported by joists. So the interior, when it was built, was lined with horizontally installed wood, ensuring a degree of airtightness that was advanced for its time. It represents an established and familiar visual feature of the city. The house is in its original location. And this is the application, some other slides that just repeat what I've already gone through. We did send notification letters, 25 letters were sent. We received one response in support of the project, and no responses otherwise. Staff is recommending approval. The Historic Preservation Commission on their May 8th meeting recommended approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission at their May 12th meeting also recommended approval. Thank you, and if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Counsel? Questions?
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
Kara, what does it mean to the owner if they apply to the local historic landmark? What type of restrictions or building stuff are they bound to once they get this designation?
So any improvements that are visible from the street would need to be reviewed by historic staff. This is located in Historic Conservation Overlay, which is a district that is a historic district, but allows for staff review.
They're already in the historical overlay, right?
That's correct.
So are there any new restrictions that this designation would cause?
So typically with the Historic Conservation Overlay, they do look to the design guidelines, but those are somewhat less restrictive than the Historic Preservation Overlay, which requires Historic Preservation Commission review.
Okay.
And you said it's only visible from the outside. What if they want to make changes on the inside?
Right.
Is that, are they restricted to that?
They could make changes on the inside. It's the exterior that is reviewed.
Okay.
I might just mention that this also qualifies them to apply for the historical grant program that we have for tax abatement, so we can look at that as they make improvements to the property that can be abated as well. So that's an incentive.
They also get a tax incentive on their personal properties, tax. Is that correct?
No. If they get, if they apply for the historical increment reinvestment tax for, you know, doing repairs to the exterior of the building, it can be rebated through that tax abatement.
Okay.
That's a program that has to also be approved by the council application, so.
Other questions? No? Well, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't have anyone that's signed up, but if there's anyone here that wants to speak up, just raise your hand. See no hands? See nobody else standing up, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, more questions, discussion? No? Then look to get a motion to adopt ordinance number 25-28, approving the request of Bill and Alice Hilton to designate the Keith Brock Home as a local historic landmark, property located 523 Peach Street.
So moved.
Mr. Woodley makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez, seconds. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, that will pass 6-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. and Ms. Hilton here tonight? Thank you. It's beautiful, beautiful, those floors just blow me away. Okay. Let's move to 7.2. Also have a public hearing here. Consider approving the request of Britt Phillips to want, adopt ordinance number 25-29, ending the future land use plan contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan from, amending it from low-density residential to retail office. And then adopt ordinance number 25-30, changing the zoning from interim holding to planned development like commercial, interim holding to light commercial. And the property is located 4172 East US Highway 377. Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Wowie?
There we go. So this is our location slide. I tried to fashion this up. There's two parts to this request. One is a, one applies to the zoning specifically, which is the two parts, and then we have the comprehensive plan amendment. So follow me closely, please. The site is there, outlined in teal, and the comprehensive plan amendment applies to the portion that's to the north, and the zone change applies to both of those rectangles. The one to the north, there's a PD zoning proposal with a base zoning of light commercial, and the one to the south is a standard light commercial zoning. So the existing zoning is an interim holding. It's 3.37 acres. A plat application has been submitted. The property was annexed as a voluntary annexation in November of last year, and so the moratorium agreement is also in place. The key component of this project is for the development of a warehouse showroom with The proposal to amend the future land use map would take the future land use map from low-density residential to retail office, and retail office is compatible to the light commercial district. Low-density residential is single-family detached dwellings with a density of 2 to 6 units per acre, and a typical lot size of 7,000 to 12,000 square feet. And retail office is, just as its name says, typical of offices, retail establishments, restaurants, and the like. And the considerations for future land use plan amendments include, and these are in summary, retail office along Peck Road would be compatible and similar to that development that occurs along Highway 377 and at the corner to the south along Peck Road. There are retail office uses there, and the land use plan recommends such. Infrastructure would be provided with the development. Peck Road is a commercial two-lane undivided road per the thoroughfare plan, and improvements would be considered with the plat. The proposal would add retail types of inventory, and existing uses in the area are commercial in nature to the south, and the RV park to the east, otherwise undeveloped property on the other two sides of the property. Now we have your context map for zoning. The interim holding is shown in green, so you can see that is the subject site. The pink is light commercial to the west and to the south. So the zoning proposed for light commercial would be compatible. And the proposed use is light commercial, that property to the south would be combined with land to the south to create a developable lot, and that is showing up on their application proposal. The PD light commercial would be light commercial plus the use warehouse showroom office on the property, and the application includes that. And it's a PD, so we'll be going over the PD part in the next few slides. This is their PD amended standards, which includes a, the use is stated, office, warehouse, showroom, office use, and adjusted setback along the frontage of Peck Road from 30 feet to 18 feet. And we'll see in the site plan and elevations and landscape plan that there'll be a buffer creating a corral for the parking for the office showroom warehouse along Peck Road. You wouldn't see the interior, the parking, and the activities. Adjusting the parking space count from one per 750 plus one space per employee to one parking space per 750 square feet plus one additional per unit. The application justifies that the location would be for mom-and-pop companies like plumbers, electricians, that allow for office warehouses with storage of supplies, and believes that the ratio adjustment would provide adequate parking. So let's look at the site plan. This would be a phase development, and this is due to the need for the moratorium waiver. They would be placing their septic there to the south along the frontage of Peck Road. So the initial construction would consist of 11 warehouse showroom storefronts in those buildings to the north and to the right, or south, I've got my directions, I always do that, to the up on this slide is east, and to the right is south. And then Phase 2. So this is where the building would be located in Phase 2, when the septic is no longer needed. They would build this string of tenant spaces. And the elevations of the building, that'd be from the interior, they would have those drawdown doors, these sides, and the landscape plan. So you see Phase 1, landscape plan to the upper right, and Phase 2, landscape plan to the lower side, and where they have the trees and the landscaping. You can see how that comes together to create kind of a corral for the parking on the interior. And staff mailed out seven public notices to property owners as required. We also published it in the newspaper. We also, when we mailed, we sent letters, and we received no responses in favor nor in opposition to the proposal. Staff's recommending approval of the request, both the PD, the comprehensive plan, the PD, and the light commercial. The Planning and Zoning Commission also had the same recommendation. And these are your voting options. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Counsel? Questions? No questions? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Callaway, I have you signed up to speak.
No, it is. I learned last time. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm really pleased to be here tonight. In front of you, my name is Tony Callaway. I am representing the applicant for this project. And since about September of last year, we've been in the process of working with staff through first initial agreement with the city to provide this project with the approval to do a septic system, which we are probably not going to do now. But in exchange for that, we agreed to do the annexation, which we have accomplished. We have also been working with staff through a variety of issues, the comp plan amendment, as well as the zoning, which is before you tonight. Really pleased to be here in terms of this project. We think it's an excellent project for the city. There are a couple of variances that we have requested related to this. The one I think maybe of the most interest is related to the setback on Peck Street. Because of the improvements that we're gonna have to make onto Peck Street as part of the project, obviously there's some loss of property along that side. So what we requested is that we keep the setback, for the building setback, where it was normally 30 feet, because of what we're giving up on the property on the frontage, asking to keep it at 18 feet. So it's at the same place it was before, it just is not as far away from the street. I've actually done that on a couple of other situations in my career. in my career. Uh, and it's, I think it's a valid, since the shallow nature of this site, and it allows us to, um, to develop the property in a reasonable way. Also, the request on parking is really just, the ordinance calls for the one space per seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet and then one for each employee. We obviously don't know how many employees that we're going to have. Uh, however, typically, these kinds of projects are, have a fairly minimum number of employees and especially, um, customers who come to this site. So we've identified for each bay, there's basically three parking spaces provided for each bay. These bays are fifteen-hundred square feet, uh, which in our experience is more than adequate for this type of property. Uh, we have submitted the design under the, uh, plan development, uh, development plan for all the buildings. Includes stone accents as well as the metal components. And I think it's gonna be a really positive project for the city. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Callaway? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would want to speak on this item? See no hands. I'll go ahead and close the public, uh, hearing part of this agenda. Counsel, no other comments? This requires that we approve, disapprove two, uh, of the, two agenda, or two motions here. So motion number one is consider approving the request of Britt Phillips to one, adopt ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-nine, amending the future land use plan contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan from low-density residential to retail office. Do I hear a motion to approve or disapprove?
So moved.
To approve?
Unapproved.
Second.
Made by Mr. Overdier, seconded by Mr. Wadley to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-nine. Discussion, no? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That passes six and oh. Now do I hear a motion to approve, disapprove ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty, changing the zoning from interim holding to planned development slash light commercial and interim holding to light commercial?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Overdier. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That, no, all opposed say nay. I hear no nays, that will pass six and oh, too. Thank you, Mr. Callaway. Thank you, uh, Mr. Phillips. This is, uh, good work by all here. Thank you. And we are hopeful that you don't have to put in that wastewater treatment plant or opportunity there. All right. We'll move to seven point three. It's also is a public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number twenty-five, thirty, dash thirty-one, approving the request of Mike Collins for a zoning change from residential seven-thousand R-seven to planned development R-seven, PDR slash R-seven. And this property is located at one-thousand-and-one, Loop five-sixty north, north of Nitty-Bakis Road. Ms. Wally?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We start with our site location map. The site's outlined in teal. Uh, the applicant is proposing a zone change for residential subdivision that was originally zoned R-seven residential, so that existing is R-seven residential. The applicant would like to change the zoning to planned development residential R-seven to allow smaller side setbacks. And you can see the context there of the site. Um, it's been under construction a little bit and is surrounded by a single family. The adjacent single family is in the county and the subdivision that's proposed for this project is in the city. You went again?
Karen, I think I can fast-track this a little bit.
Sure.
We've been through this in the past and they've been through the six-month waiting period, cooling-off period to the request to deny those five-foot setbacks. And since that time, they've produced information that interested all involved to build a better product than what they could with the larger setbacks. So, um, I think that's probably bringing everybody up to date. Am I right? Zebr, you up to date on that? So I think it's just a matter of reading ordinances at this point.
Yep.
I mean, the public might wanna see it, I guess, because it is a public hearing. So it allows them to orient their property different and the house different and got a lot more variety. And they end up with a home more like they have at Abe's Landing instead of over at Sandstone.
So these are just some, some samples that the applicant had provided out of their, um, viewbook of the homes and how they would be able to have three-car garage and a little bit wider home on the lots. The lotting plan would stay the same. It's just the setbacks that would be changing.
And the planning and zoning had no more, had no more questions about it. They approved at five and oh unanimously.
They voted five-zero to approve, yes, to recommend approval.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, are there no other questions or comments? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. And, uh, Mr. Hafe has signed up to speak on this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Richard Hafes. I live on Riverbank Lane in Abe's Landing where Bloomfield Homes is currently building houses. For those who've been on the council for a while may recall that on July fifth, 2022, you approved a zoning for Abe's Landing Phases five-A-three and five-A-four, identical to what you're considering tonight. Bloomfield Homes has come in and is building on those lots, is able to build their full inventory, gives very attractive streetscapes and gives the, the, the home buyer the house that they want. I'd also like to comment that Bloomfield Homes is not the typical home builder that I'm used to where they come in and build houses and that's all they do. They have become a valued part of our community in Abe's Landing, and we're very happy to have them. And I hope that you will approve this zoning change for Eldorado so the same thing can happen there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hafes. So, Mr. Mike Collins, would you like to speak, sir?
Good evening. My name is Mike Collins, eighteen-oh-six Summit Ridge in Ullis, Texas. I'm representing Bloomfield Homes. I believe that I would be foolish if I weren't to be very, very brief. We appreciate the privilege of being before you and your favorable consideration of this item would enable us, as has been indicated, to offer additional models to potential customers in a very, very desirable market here in the Granbury area. I would be available for any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Counsel, have questions? Mr. Collins?
Mayor, I did ask a question. Asked him what the starting, uh, what the cost of a starter home was. Do you wanna take a guess?
Well, I, I, I heard you say starter home and I'm like, we're gonna hear that price in cringe, I'm sure. Mr. Collins?
Yes, if I could address that in a little bit more detail. I wish that I had brought the most recent report that Residential Strategies publishes on an annual basis. In any given year in the greater metroplex, there's about fifty thousand homes that are sold. The price points are divided up into five quintiles, basically less than three-hundred-thousand, three to roughly three-seventy-five. I'm gonna get some of the numbers, perhaps inaccurate, but the bottom line is the fourth quintile represents a range of housing in the four-hundred to four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand range. Bloomfield is the number-one builder in that segment. And then the fifth quintile is roughly five-hundred-and-fifty and greater, and we're number four in terms of the number of homes built in that price category. So, um, our starting price within the subdivisions that we have the privilege to develop here will begin in the low four-hundreds.
Uh, and I know that they vary based on finishment. Uh, what's, what is the range on per square foot when you say four-hundred-thousand?
Uh, anywhere from twenty-three based on the largest pad size of the three-car garage that we would build here, roughly thirty-six to thirty-seven-hundred square feet.
So anywhere from one-fifty, one-seventy-five a square foot, or two-fifty, two-fifty?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions?
I might just add a little color to that. For, for the viewing public at home, we do have a subdivision that's in the pipeline that's gonna be much lower in price based on a reduced footprint of the house. So there is a whole marketing package coming to attract, uh, the entry-level home buyer. And this is, this may be an entry-level home buyer for, for some folks, but, uh, not, not many of our schoolteachers can jump out and buy that house right now. So they're gonna need to become principals probably to be able to hit that price range, so. Uh, but anyway, we do have a whole subdivision designed and moving forward to the, uh, plating process that will accommodate the, the two-seventy-five to three-fifty range, more than likely. And it's two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a foot. That's the bottom line. It's just expensive to build a house. That's what I'm hearing anyway from other builders. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir. I wondered where, I looked down the same time you disappeared. How he, how did he do that? Yeah. Thank you. All right. Anyone else want to speak? It's a public hearing? No? And I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have other questions, comments? All right. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-five, thirty-one, approving the request of Mike Collins for a zoning change from residential seven-thousand R-seven to planned development, uh, R-seven to, and the property is located at one-thousand-and-one, Loop five-sixty-seven, which is north of Nitty-Bakis Road.
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion? Second?
Second.
Mr. Allen makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That will be approved, six and oh. Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Hafes, for coming in and recognizing as a citizen. Certainly appreciate you coming in and giving us insight and input as well, Mr. Collins. So now we're going to seven-four, which is also a public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number twenty-five, dash thirty-two, approving the request of Jose Jimenez to, number one, abandon the right-of-way for unimproved portions of Live Oak Street, North City, North Crites Street and North Lancaster Street. And number two, replat Lot one-R, Block four of the Crites addition being five-point-six-eight-six-seven acres. The property is located at nine-twelve West Bridge Street. Ms. Wally?
Thank you. So this is our site location map. I'm getting a sense of, of speed here, so I'm going to move this quite fast. Uh, the site is located north of Bridge Street there and west of Jones. It's five acres, as was stated. This drawing shows the replat that's proposed. The applicant seeks to create one lot from a, a number of lots and from abandoned right-of-way that's been dedicated through the, the former plating. So that's what this would look like. The site would have access to Bridge Street, which is on the bottom. And the right-of-way abandonment is to, to, uh, remove North Lancaster Street, Crites Street and Live Oak Street. And to complete the plat, those need to be abandoned. This is the right-of-way abandonment exhibit. You can see to the left, there's a, a note with a pink arrow pointing to Lancaster area that would be abandoned. In the middle of the site, towards the right, there's another pink arrow pointing to Crites Street that would be abandoned. And the third area, there's a next arrow that's pink pointing to Live Oak Street. So all three of those, plus all those lots, would be replatted to create one lot.
Could I ask a question while you're making your presentation? Just for clarity, is North Lancaster Street paved where it's illustrated with the purple hash mark outside the boundaries?
No.
And neither is Crites?
None of these have been improved at all.
And Live Oak as well?
No, none of them have been even accepted. It's just a plat on paper.
I just think it'd be good for me to explain that and make sure they.
Sure.
Because I asked it Monday and they weren't here when I asked it.
Right, right. Okay. And so we're required when we have a, a residential replat to send public notice. We did that. Two-thirty notices were sent within two-hundred feet. And we also published in the newspaper. We received one letter in favor and no letters received in opposition to the request. Staff is recommending approval of the abandonment as well as the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at their meeting on May twelfth. And these are your voting options. There should be two, uh, motions, one for the right-of-way abandonment and, uh, then one for the replat.
Okay. There was also a question Monday. We still feel very comfortable that there is no, there are no utilities buried across these properties.
Right.
We received no other information. Okay. Good. Other questions? Counsel, Mr. Corgan? No one? Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this? Yes, sir, just come up and give us your name and, uh, address.
Good evening. My name is Paul Ward. I'm the owner of Award Surveying. Address two-five-two, West Main Street, Suite F, Azul, Texas. And I'm the survey of record. Be available for any questions if you have any.
I guess we just, I'm gonna ask the question again to hear from the survey. We had, had the question, are, to the best of your knowledge out there, there are no utilities, underground utilities, water sewer, electrical that's running across this property that we may not have known about?
None readily available. This was, uh, one of the plats of Crites from, I think it was nineteen-oh-seven. These lots were never were developed and they were just vacant land up until this point.
Okay. Okay. Questions? No? We appreciate you coming in. Thanks, sir. Was there someone else that stood?
My name is Bronwyn Jimenez and, um, my husband is watching live from Denver right now. Uh, anyway. Um, so we're thrilled about this because it is, um, uh, they have one more piece of property, but is the last, um, second to the last piece of Thrash Family Farm. So it's very exciting, um, to have this opportunity to build a home, uh, where they had their home and the first mayor of Granbury. So, um, we hope that, um, this can get passed through and we can proceed with building a home for our three sons.
Very good.
And we own the panhandle.
Thank you. Others? Speak. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and close this public hearing. Counsel, other questions? Okay, this is, um, just two, okay. So we're gonna do this with two motions as well. Number one is to consider adopting ordinance number twenty-five, dash thirty-two, which will abandon the right-of-way for unimproved portions of Live Oak Street, North Crites Street and North Lancaster Street. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Corgan makes a motion. Mr. Rodriguez, seconds? Comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. And it's approved 6-0. That is ordinance number 25-32. Okay? Now, ordinance... It's not a different ordinance. It's a replat. So, do I hear a motion to approve replating lot 1R Block 4 of the Crites addition, which has been 5.6867 acres? Property located at 912 West Bridge Street. Counsel, we've seen the replats, so, uh, do I hear a motion to replat this lot?
So moved.
Mr. Rodriguez makes a motion. Second?
Second.
Mr. Wiley makes a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. That two shall pass 6-0. Thank you, thank you all for coming out and speaking on this matter. We'll go to 7, 6, 7.5, also a public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number 2533 approving the request of the City of Granbury to amend section 12.3.8 A land use definitions of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance. The general purpose of the amendment is to add multiple fuel types to the convenience store with, convenience store with gas pumps definition. Ms. Wally?
Thank you. So, a little background in this, in the advent of electric vehicles, uh, we have a need to amend our zoning ordinance to recognize electric vehicles require electric charging. These are called electric charging stations, not to be confused with a large, uh, gas station. But what we're proposing is to amend the definition of convenience store with fuel pumps. In our current definition of what fuel pumps means, it's all kinds of types of fuel, right? That will power a, a vehicle. But it does not include, um, electricity. So, this amendment would merely incorporate electrical, electricity charging into that definition, and it would be considered a primary use if someone were to want to have, um, a ancillary or accessory use to an existing facility, you know, building or use, um, they'd be able to install one, uh, for that means.
With an SUV.
With an SUV. Right. So, the SUV would, would include electrical vehicle charging. If you have any questions, I can, can elaborate more. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
Uh, I'm sure there's some type of, uh, requirement or that they have to be so far apart between the gas station and the electric charging. Is that, is that correct? Do you know that?
There, there's an energy, uh, a fuel code that we would make them follow that's already adopted.
Okay.
But this is more for zoning instead of spacing like that.
Okay.
Yeah. But there's a, uh, whole chapter in the, in the fuel code of the International Codebook, counsel. Uh, I might add that this is a proactive move. Uh, we haven't had a request yet. And then I also want, uh, y'all to know that I've expressed interest in the grant program with council government to give up some of our parking spaces here at City Hall and a couple of parking spaces over by the, uh, Granbury Square Plaza for a grant-funded electric charging station if it comes to pass. So, uh, the, this zoning ordinance doesn't affect that, but, uh, we're looking to, to try to figure out how to accommodate the growth that's coming related to electric vehicles.
And I'd also like to add that the Planning and Zoning Commission did consider this in motion to, uh, forward this recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Excellent. Counsel, okay. I'm going to go ahead and open the, uh, the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, just raise your hand. I see no one raising their hand, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, other questions? No? Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 25-33 approving the request of the City of Granbury to amend section 12.3.8 A land use definitions of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance?
So moved.
Mr. Oberdear makes a motion. Mr. Alum, seconds. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass 6-0. Okay. Does it include what? Water? Could be, I guess water's a fuel, right? Hydrogen? All right. 7.6 is to consider awarding bid number 24-25-08 for the construction of the Fuel Farm Expansion Project at Granbury Regional Airport to Granbury Excavating Inc. in the amount of $1,111,934.07 and consider awarding a contract to KSA Engineering, Inc. for construction and administration in the amount of $124,931. And authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the contracts on behalf of the City of Granbury and consider adopting ordinance number 25-34 amending the operating budget for the airport fund for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Are you going to make, Ms. Wally, do this one too?
No, this, this one will be myself and Cody. We're going from electric fuel to jet A fuel now. So, uh, what an improvement. And, uh, uh, what an expansion. I'll turn it over to Cody, our aviation director, to walk us through this agenda item. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Uh, this Fuel Farm Expansion Project is identified in the airport master plan and consists of the installation of two 15,000-gallon jet A tanks and all associated plumbing and pumping equipment, as well as an integrated circle drive to accommodate fuel tanker deliveries. Funding for this project is a combination of the bipartisan infrastructure legislation grant and the airport's non-primary entitlement fund grant, all of which is a 95-5 match, except for the first of the four years of available NPE grant money, which is a 90-10 match.
Way to go.
Yeah, we'll take those.
Anytime we can throw a nickel and get a dollar, I think that's a good investment.
I agree.
Counsel, do you have questions, uh, for Cody? No? Okay. Let's go ahead. I hear a motion to, uh, award bid number 20, or consider awarding bid number 24-25-08 for the construction of the Fuel Farm Expansion Project at Granbury Regional Airport to Granbury Excavating, Inc. in the amount of $1,111,934.07. And consider awarding a contract to KSA Engineering, Inc. for construction and administration in the amount of $124,931. And authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the contracts on behalf of the city. And then, consider adopting ordinance number 25-34 amending the operating budget of the airport fund for fiscal year 24 and 25.
So moved.
Mr. Oberdear makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Alum and Mr. Corrigan both second. So, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass 6-0. Give you, give credit to your, uh, presentation skills there. Cody, thank you. 7-7, consider adopting ordinance number 2535 amending section 12.04.03.2 of the Granbury Code of Ordinances by extending the no parking zone on Stockton Street and ordinance number 25-36 repealing and replacing section 12.04.043 of the Granbury Code of Ordinances by changing the street name of the no parking zone from Plaza Drive to Harbor Lakes Drive. Two motions on this one, right? Yeah. So, Mr. Cuffin, you want...
I would like to, first off, commend Paul Gast, our newly-appointed Assistant Public Works Director, of identifying this inconsistency in our code with the name of the street. So, hats off to you for catching that and pulling this forward to correct it administratively. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Paul Gast and let him walk you through this agenda item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Like, this is one agenda, as we showed, amending two no parking ordinances. One is on North Stockton Street, which is the one that, uh, I think they came to spoke with about earlier. The, with the oak tree and the island in the middle leading into Old Mill Estates, any parking on the sides blocks access for both passenger vehicles and for emergency vehicles. So, this ordinance would just be to extend the no parking zone from Bridge Street north on the east side of Stockton Street, 210 feet to the intersection with Count's Alley, and on the west side, 155 feet to the alley and driveway for the first house. The block between Pearl Street and Bridge Street is already no parking zone, so this just extends it north another block to maintain access for those streets. The second one for Plaza Drive, uh, came up as a, during the investigation, uh, when Plaza Drive's name changed, was changed to Harbor Lakes Drive in, I believe, 2004, the no parking ordinance was not amended to reflect that change. So, the orange spaces on that, the block from South Town Boulevard to Second Street on both sides is no parking, and then some 30-foot corners at Third, Fourth, and Fifth Streets are also for no parking. But that amendment is strictly to update the name from Plaza Drive, which no longer exists, to Harbor Lakes Drive.
Very good.
Could y'all go back one slide, please?
I'll, I'll follow up with his presentation. One more, the overhead shot. Uh, Mr. White, does, does that, does the way that layout meet your needs?
Yes.
All right. I just want to make sure.
Good. Counsel? Questions? Okay. So, do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 25-35 amending section 12.04.03.2 of the Granbury Code of Ordinances by extending the no parking zone on Stockton Street as presented here? Do I hear the motion?
So moved.
Mr. Alum makes a motion.
Second.
By Mr. Corrigan, seconded by Mr. Corrigan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. 2535, ordinance 2535 will pass, will be approved. Now, do I hear a motion for ordinance number 25-36 to repeal and replace section 12.04.043 of the Granbury Code of Ordinances by changing the street name of the no parking zone from Plaza Drive to Harbor Lakes Drive?
So moved.
Mr. Wiley makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That one too is approved. 6-0. So, thank you, gentlemen. That takes care of the deliberation agenda.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just one, one further question or clarification on those no parking, will those be painted or how, how would they be indicated for no parking?
They will be painted and signs will be installed.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll just, interesting you asked that question. We are currently reviewing all the no parking areas that we have painted red now on, on, uh, on Crockett Street and trying to come up with a solution for an unloading zone for the freight that's being delivered to all the businesses on that Bridge Street block. So, uh, there's, there's some friction going on there with trucks getting in the way, and so we're working on that as well. And so, we're going to be uniform in everything we do. Some of them are painted orange or yellow, and some of them are painted red. We're going to, we're going to be uniform in everything we do to get this worked out in his neighborhood and over on, uh, Harbor Lakes neighborhood, and then the existing ones that are painted red. We're working through the ASHTO standards. Those are, that's an acronym for, uh, the Highway Standard Safety Manual to, to determine how to provide consistency to all of it throughout our community. So, we're working on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other? Anybody? Okay. Well, we're going to go ahead, and, uh, Mr. Haves has signed up to, uh, speak on the citizen comments, and while he's coming up, I wanted to make a, a comment. Tonight, uh, you know, it was a fairly contentious night. We were 6-0 and everything. And I just want to comment that that is not an indication of a rubber stamp. That is an indication of the exceptional work that our staff does in making sure that these, that the work is done right, like, uh, what Mr. Glass found that's been, been there for years, but it came, came forward. And it's also a testament to the work that the council does pre-comeing and sitting down at this. The homework does get done, and we appreciate the staff, uh, tonight, the Kara Wally Show, making certain that, uh, we have the right information to make the right decision for the City of Granbury. So, thank you, Mr. Cuffin. Thank you, staff, for doing those sorts of things. Mr. Haves, we have citizens' comments. You're allowed two hours and 30 minutes because we're running ahead of time.
I'd promise to be briefer than that, Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening again, Mayor and counsel. My name is Richard Haves. I live here in, in Granbury on Riverbank Lane. Uh, I'm here to talk to you today about the recently completed Spring Fire Academy. Last Saturday, 52 firefighters graduated from the academy, uh, representing all nine volunteer fire departments in the county and eight fire departments outside of the county. It, it's the largest class we've graduated and is possible due to the great work of our, our officers and members of the volunteer fire department, coupled with great community support. For example, churches provide lunch each day of the 13-week Fire Academy, so it's a, uh, better use of people's time. Members, experienced members of all nine volunteer departments here in the county bring instructors to the Fire Academy, and we can't forget the support we get from you, our city council. You don't want just a fire department. You want a good fire department in this city, and you provide us with the leadership, the funding, and support to make that happen. And this Fire Academy where, where students came from as far as an hour and a half away to come to our Fire Academy is a, a symbol of what you have, has been built under your leadership. And I thank you for that.
Thank you. Don't, uh, understate the leadership that you provided to that, uh, group as well. So, I'm, uh, coming in. I believe we have no more business here. So, I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session. All members are present. City Council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. 551071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. 551072, deliberation regarding real property. And 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. So, now, I will close this session and convene us into closed session. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. Is there any further business? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wiley.
Thank you, Eddie.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a development agreement with the Lancaster Trust for development of a property located on 377 for plating, zoning, and annexation.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passed as stated. Thank you. Any other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wiley?
I'd like to make the motion to authorize the city manager to execute a development agreement with the Colet Retail or its assigns for the development of a property located on 377 as set out in closed session.
Second.
Motion's made. Mr. Oberdear's seconded. No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That passes 6-0.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wiley?
I'd like a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a development agreement with Project Frontier as set out in closed session.
Second.
And Mr. Oberdear's seconded that motion. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That passes 6-0.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wiley?
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the city manager's execution of the airport commercial land lease with Granbury Hangers LLC and Beach Fork Agriculture LLC.
Second.
Mr. Wiley makes a motion. Mr. Oberdear's seconded. No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. There are no nays. That will pass 6-0. Mr. Wiley?
Finally.
Oh, good.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a development agreement with Granbury Hangers LLC and Beach Fork Agriculture LLC as set forth in closed session.
Second.
And Mr. Oberdear will second that motion. No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass 6-0 as well. Mr. Wiley? And there being no further business, I announce the meeting adjourned.